All right, we will, it's a little after six o'clock, so we'll call this meeting of the ISD 181 Board of Education to order. And we'll start with roll call, please, Janet.
Kevin Boiles.
Here.
Michelle Breckin.
Here.
DJ Donliner. Randy Heidman.
Here.
Sarah Spear.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Five of the six present.
Thank you. Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a stack of public comment tonight. Let's, Rachel Combe, be so kind to come up and get started? Oh, we should, we agenda. I get so excited for public comment. All right, so we are on for a little agenda presentation. That's why she's the vice chair. All right, we have a motion from Director Spear with a second by Director Breckin. Any conversations, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And note before we, actually before I announce the passage of that motion, we do have a light amendment to the agenda in that item number 10, which is the informational Marcy's Business Services Report. There are a couple of attachments that are in there that'll go for a report and show, shall, one hour, that's fair. So with that said, motion passes. Here he is, and we are good to go. Now, Rachel Combe, if you are in the house.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Combe, I'm a community member concerned about children. If I were to guess, I'd say that most of you, maybe all of you here, are choosers vocation because you care about children. And you want to make a difference in their lives. Maybe you even chose this role because you love children. First Corinthians 14 says, "Love is patient, love is kind, it does not envy, it does not boast, it is not fome, it does not dishonor others, it is not self-seeking, it is not easily angered, it keeps no record of wrongs." Love does not divide in evil, but rejoices with evil. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always protects. Love never fails. That's a really hard verse to live life, but it's certainly a bold, dry and clean. Parents concerned for children should reflect in material that we provide them access to. Here is approximately 100 pages of sexually explicit excerpts from the pre-middle school library with article from the Destiny System indicating whether the book is available or not. School districts concerned for children will take upon themselves to remove these books from libraries without a complicated review procedure involving many people in the district having to spend time on meetings regarding it. And there are school districts in Minnesota that are doing this. In Proverbs, it says righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. I encourage you to seek righteousness and decency with your decisions on these books, with urgency to protect the children. Be a voice for those that cannot speak for themselves. Thanks.
Thank you. And next we have Sarah Rota.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Sarah Rota. I'm the union president for the Educational Assistance in Brainerd Public Schools. Officially, we are the Educational Assistance 7322 Education Minnesota. I would like to thank the school board and Superintendent Han for this opportunity to speak. As educational assistants, we offer support to students in Brainerd Public Schools. We support the emotional, academic, vocational, and behavioral needs of students ages three to 12 from early education through the Atlas Program. Our jobs are hard. We work inside and out in all kinds of weather. We ride buses and drive school vehicles. We supervise playgrounds and crosswalks. We help with the loading and unloading of buses. We are in classrooms and hallways, sensory rooms, nurses' offices, cafeterias, and yes, bathrooms too. We are present before, during, and after school. We support students on field trips, during Special Olympics, and in the community as job coaches and lending volunteers. Educational assistants attend school dances, graduation, and grad class to support students for whom, without that support, those activities may not be possible. Rewards of our, sorry, the rewards of our profession cannot always be measured by conventional means. For example, when the first grader you've been working with starts using the restroom in the penning room. When your level three elementary student starts using the tools from their toolbox to interact with their peers. When your non-verbal ASC student hugs you goodbye for the first time. When a student begins to advocate for themselves. When a student who struggles socially finds a new friend. And when a high school senior says, "I wouldn't have graduated without you." Since March 2023, the paraprofessional teams have been negotiating a contract with district representatives. In July, we had a tentative offer, and on July 26th, the membership of our local group voted overwhelmingly to approve a tentative contract. Our contract will be presented to you tonight for your approval. Most people do not become paraprofessionals to get rich, but we do deserve their compensation. I ask that you vote to approve the ratification of the Educational Assistance Contract tonight. I thank you for your time, and I, along with the rest of Local 7322, look forward to workshop weeks and an exciting first week at school. And I look forward with hope and confidence to the 2023-2024 season. Thank you.
I was missed at the beginning again, no big surprise. An announcement also, we had technical difficulties that Ryan diligently tried to solve for the better part of the day. We are not live streaming. We are recording the meeting. It will be available online as usual on YouTube shortly after the conclusion of tonight's meeting, but it is not being livestreamed because something broke. So with that said, let's move on to Rick Felth, please.
Sergeant Rick Felth, US Army, Brainerd, Minnesota. Two plus two equals four, but every 100 times it equals five. The first part of that statement is absolutely correct, correct to the point where I would say that every single person in the world, it would apply to. That would make it a absolute truth. But I'm sure that some people in this room would sit, would argue with me that what is true for you is not true for me. When I was 16 years old, I held the deer rifle in my mouth for 20 deaths because I'm bullied and teased and was suicided in school. So unfortunately, I do not have a lot of good memories of school. But I will say this, I will applaud my school for being absolutely determined to bring forth the truth as they saw it. And they absolutely taught everything that they knew according to the scientific truth. Unfortunately, nowadays, that is not, no longer the case. When the truth and the trust is eroded to the point where people no longer trust the school system, we have a serious problem on our hands. Brainerd's school system, the high school, I brought this up two years ago and I was gabbed and dummed. And one of the persons sitting right behind me and front of me right now never even bothered to help me with my constitutional rights. I was illegally gabbed and dummed when I said that I would be ashamed of the board members because Brainerd High School used to be ranked in the top 10. That's a remarkable achievement. Now it's ranked at 161 in the state of Minnesota. The Titanic has been sinking for a long time. And when I asked for a conclusive plan from the board of what they were going to do to turn the Titanic around, I was gabbed and dummed, and I was told that I was out of order. But now I know my constitutional rights and I'm not going to be gabbed and dummed. I know that I can absolutely address my petitions publicly and have them addressed. This has been happening for a long time. A lot of parents are concerned about the academic climate of our school system. We go from a top 10 down to 161. And yet, I see absolutely no conclusive plan on how to turn it around. We were more concerned about spending $230 million to make great, big buildings instead of making a better school system for our children and people.
Thank you. Sheri Holsey.
Hi, I'm Sheri Holsey. Five of us citizens cast fears, myself included, recently received a response from Superintendent Hayden Han at this district regarding our objections to many sexually vile books in the middle school library. Her response perfectly demonstrates exactly how Policy 606 was designed to work. Obfuscate, delay, draw out, and deny any failures belong to unpardonable school districts. One could say that finding or creating loopholes is the forte and intended strength of Policy 606. Any discussion of the actual problem can then be unintentionally or intentionally buried and disguised under the minutia of supposed procedural missteps. But we citizens will not be discouraged. We still have truth on our side. No policy can or will change that fact. You may not believe it, but there are many of us here who are praying for all of you. Praying that you recognize and reject the evil subject matter of these books represented. I'm reading one of them right now, and it's pathetic that it's in our school district. And we know it is just that, evil. Proverbs, chapter 28, verse 18. Whoever wants in and takes are they will be delivered, but he who is crooked in his ways will suffer. Thank you.
Nick Yelman.
Nick Yelman. The board talks about wanting to have kids set up for the future with experiences and knowledge of real-life things. At least that is one of the reasons some of you say that sexually explicit books need to be left in public schools in the hands of children. It was also brought up that child behavior and literacy issues are some of the top concerns by this board. So it was brought to our attention by Director Donliner on July 10th that when he toured the classroom, kids had games and social media platforms pulled up during classroom teaching time. Why? Do you not see that this is probably a major problem leading to some of the behavioral problems and literacy problems? If they are not listening in class, how are they to learn from their teacher? What are they here for if not to learn? When kids are distracted and distracted from other kids with behavioral problems and the teacher has to deal with it, it is also taking away valuable learning time from those other kids. Director Boiles then said, "If computers were restricted and that every kid has a phone, so they will just use that." Why would kids have their phones out during teaching time? If we are truly trying to set these kids up for their future and their careers, then why are we allowing that? Many, many jobs that these kids will get after high school will not allow them to constantly be on their phones, getting paid to play games, and be on social media. So I'm confused as to why this is even allowed or a problem in the first place. When I was in Brainerd Public Schools, I remember groups of kids and teenagers coming to our classroom or auditorium and speaking about abstinence. Is this still a thing, or are those types of events or education being offered? Or is that just an old thing and times have changed, so let's just teach them about sex, encourage sex as a young person, forget about all the risks, harms, and mental instabilities that could come with it? Not to mention the responsibilities of being a parent or becoming a parent when you're in seventh or eighth grade. How is that setting them up for a successful future as this board and school claims to want to do? Also, these books are teaching them about rape and other sexually related crimes and essentially teaching them how to commit the crime. So let's just go ahead and set them up for failure should maybe be the school board's goal because it's exactly the road that it's heading down. And based on the track record of test scores, behavioral issues, and the kids leaving your district, it doesn't get much clearer. Why not prevent the problem before it happens instead of create the problem and deal with its consequences? It's like administering medicine to a dead person. It doesn't make sense, and it maybe is a little too late. Also, speaking for myself, I am not here because I want to be on YouTube. I am here because I am a God-fearing American patriot, and resistance to tyranny is obedience to God. So I am here to resist your evil ways and protect these kids. As the Bible says, "I am my brother's keeper." I am here for God's children and my brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Olson.
Mark Olson, Isaiah 5:20. Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who turn darkness to light and light to darkness, who replace bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter. Regarding District Policy 606, statement of policy definition. The Board of Education of 181 supports the principles of intellectual freedom inherent in the First Amendment of the Constitution. The First Amendment has five guarantees and one main one, freedom of speech. The school district is a government entity, and each of you are emissaries of this government, and you are obligated to follow the U.S. Constitution. If I choose to complain about a teacher, a school board member, that's my right under the Constitution. The Supreme Court has already ruled on this in Sullivan versus New York in 64. On June 12th, we brought books to your attention, and we had also to come back on July 10th. And we had the same event, and nothing was done. You use the excuse that Policy 606 must be followed to address the garbage you provide to children in the libraries. Now, I will concede that there needs to be policies and procedures, but there is something as black and white as sex trash being given to kids. Just take care of it as adults. Then you deliberated over a length of time with a fortitude vote on a terrible policy. These books are clearly rated R. Then you, Mr. Ward, using insufferable audacity, give a speech on getting along and coming together, and then tell everyone how the entire thing is purely subjective. Then when I tried talking to you after the meeting about moral implications, you went off on me and just screamed and yelled, just the opposite of what you ask of us, a very poor example of one who claims to be such a proud educator. Mr. Boiles, you accused us of playing to the camera. I submit to you that's exactly what you guys do. You also told us we can't embarrass you. But apparently, you and the administration are embarrassed. Yes, I say embarrassed at the books and also embarrassed on a number of other issues in the last so many years. Thank you.
We have Sheri Solstad.
I'm Sheri Solstad, District 181 resident, offering testimony regarding the real potential impact of sexually explicit materials. My hope is that our schools will make every effort with our limited staff, dollars, and space to provide the best, most edifying, legal, age-appropriate, and useful materials for our students. I call my input a testimony rather than exclusively an opinion because for over 30 years of working in the Brainerd area as an occupational therapist, my client focus was in the area of mental health. I witnessed firsthand the horrific results that sexual abuse can have on mental health. Abuse is often seen as a common precursor to a number of mental health concerns. Some of the known abuse has been minor on minor abuse. The excerpts from the material which were read aloud at previous meetings were not only explicit, but some appeared to be grooming in nature, with one minor guiding the sexual engagement of another minor. Exposure to this type of material may easily promote abuse and exploitation, and we appear to condone it when it is being offered by our schools. The trauma and confusion resulting from such experiences can be lifelong. Why would we as educators, parents, and stewards of the funds entrusted to us offer this kind of material? Regardless if it's available elsewhere or even everywhere else, we collectively make our call to responsibly, carefully use our resources of dollars, staff, facilities, and time for our students' benefit. Are sexually explicit materials our best option? It is appropriate to choose boundaries related to age, legal considerations, et cetera. We wouldn't expect great schoolers to understand the detailed auto mechanics manual, nor would we promote high schoolers checking out Playboy for its literary value. Honestly, we know some boundaries are healthy and helpful. Why offer materials that a court of law could define as sexually explicit and which I personally see as a gateway literature for groomers who could entice our students into actions that drain on harvest of heartache for years to come? I pray and hope that you will develop ideal criteria guidelines so our schools are filled with materials that build up our students as they learn. Thank you.
Doug Kerr.
You didn't want to hear, as I teach Sunday School, hundreds of kids have come through the system, hundreds more that will. On Policy 606, using book challenges to resolve pornography issues in the elementary. People hear that? You have a few parents, a few parents leave the school. You get, where are the adults in the room here? When parents put their trust in you, that's what they do. They put their children, that's everything that they have, their children. They put their trust in you, and the trust is broken, you lose more. Knowing how damaging sexualizing children is and allowed it through this policy, like back and going through a backdoor and keeping the Policy 606. We know how that's going to go. We've done that before. There are state and federal laws that prohibit with you as a board allowing, there are state and federal laws. It's not just with the policy that there are state and federal laws. People see that, and began to look. A few more children. The last page of the book called "It's Perfectly Normal," which I know is in school, I have reports of it over the years, is here, which describes every sex act that you could possibly imagine. It says, the last page, and you can Google it, you can find it. It says, "When it's right for you, when you feel comfortable, this is for you." This book's intended for elementary children. Elementary. You talk about grooming. People see that, and again, you get a more parents leave the school district, or hemorrhaging parents, or hemorrhaging students because there's a lack of trust. You know, when you see one parent leave, the school district is like, ah, see you later. Two, two parents, three parents, four parents, you know, you see the parents leaving, but there comes a point where you have this, you have the whole. And that happens, the school district's going to go belly up. I don't know exactly how that's going to work, but parents put their trust in you as a board and in this district. They put their trust in you guys. And I'm all for public education, but this ain't public education. Thank you.
All right, Mike Stanek.
Good evening. I've served in the Army National Guard for 21 years. I'm a God-fearing American as well. I've been to Iraq. I've done unimaginable things. I may lean conservative on some issues. I look at a board in front of me, which I ran for in 2022. And I'm thankful for the board sitting in front of me. Everything happens for a reason. Maybe I wasn't ready to be on the board sitting in front of me at this point, but I've had conversations with each one of these people sitting in front of me, and I can tell you that they all care for kids. They do. We may not agree, and that's good. So there's people in this room, me included, that when the old board was here, and it was 5-1 vote, every single time, we huff and we puff. We have more representation, if that's how you want to look at it. But the people sitting in front of us right now are doing the work that they were asked to do. They work. I'm thankful for them. The people sitting in the immediate room behind me, the administrators, the principals of the schools that we support, care about our children. I have a kid going into fifth grade here, Mr. Anderson, and I'm thankful for what you do here. Hurting 2,000 cats isn't very easy. So I appreciate you. I appreciate your staff. Will I ever agree with all of them? No, I won't. But you know what I can do? I can have a cordial conversation with somebody, and I can get my point across without having to be too loud. And I say that because in April of 2021, I was in this very seat questioning books that my second grader had in front of them. You know what I did? I looked at the policy and I said, oh, wait, I have to write a letter requesting challenging of this book. That's what I did. Guess what happened? I got an email. The books will be laid out for you and the other parents that are questioning these books. And at that time, Assistant Superintendent Han and Mr. Tim Martha laid those books up for us. And yes, were there things that we found that we didn't agree with? Yep. Guess what we did? We challenged them. Some stayed, some went. The policy, when I ran in 2022, policy-driven, that was one of my cornerstones. Now, the policy is there. Follow the policy, let it happen. I just happened to be on the ad hoc committee that's going to be talking about these books coming up on Friday. Let the policy take its toll. See what happens. Please. That's all I have. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for letting everybody be heard, because that's also important.
And we have Dottie Smith.
My name is Dottie Smith. And I'm glad to be here. I recently spent two evenings watching two separate documents on Ted Bundy. To say they were interesting with what he did. Also, you came across him much like the typical boy in his store. By his own admission, he had a very normal childhood and quite happy. At the age of 12 or so, he saw his first porn magazine at a local store. At that time, in our culture, soft porn was being used to describe what captured his attention. Over a four-year period, he murdered and raped about 30 women. During an interview with Dr. James Dobson just prior to his execution, Bundy had lost all his audience. The naked truth of how his life was influenced by the violent acts he committed because of his addiction to pornography came out. Even at this point in his life, he made it clear that his parents and family had nothing to do with his addiction to porn. The story did not stop there. After Bundy was dead and was being shipped out, the news media began to attack Dr. Dobson for showing Bundy some degree of kindness. Dr. Dobson spoke kindly, but pushed for answers that were difficult for Bundy. One man said, "This has nothing to do with pornography. He was responsible for his actions." I certainly agree. However, there is nothing else in Bundy's life that would lead him to extreme acts of violence. That moment, at that moment, it was clear to me that pornography was somehow being protected. My question was, why? In some way, I'm convinced that pornography is being protected within this school. In some way, I'm convinced that pornography is being protected within this school, public school library. I'm gonna thank the attorney from the building.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Public comment team.
I have one more.
New? Yeah, sure. Come on up. You're about to hear from, make sure I have the last name right, is it Heinemann? Heinemann?
Yes, sir.
Samuel Heinemann. Welcome, Samuel.
Thank you. Well, I think Bundy had something better. I think we agree that the school's job is to lay solid, it's a solid foundation. Like the first year of Berks, your partnership with the parents, that is the proof of your actions. I read a lot, I read a lot of library books growing up, and I have a special credit in it because they're approved. They're approved, it's passed together to the books here. We're giving, we're giving them, saying, these are books to you to read. What do you think, your children, the books? What about your grandchildren? Grand students of these, not long enough?
Thank you. Thank you, that's it. Okay. And we will move on to the approval of minutes from the July 10th, regular school board.
I have a motion, Mr. Ed.
Second. We have a motion from Director Spearman, a second from Director Ward, approve the regular school board meeting minutes from July 10th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion here. And now we are on to the consent calendar. We have a couple of changes here, maybe just one, I think. So, we're going to pull out the PSEO agreement with CLC and move that to a separate item if we can. Is that possible to do, or do we have to push it to one, two, nine? If we have to pull it out, we have a conflict of interest on that, so it's gotta be voted on separately. And I believe that's, did you have some comments, Director Heinemann?
I have a comment and a question.
Shoot.
Comment regarding the staff changes. I wanna congratulate Thomas Fairbanks on being named the first baseball alumnus to be named varsity head baseball coach. So, he's not the first alumni that I had a coach. For baseball, yes, but not as a head coach. So, I wanna congratulate him on that. I think it's gonna be a very good highlight. And a question on roundification of bills. I've never questioned any checks being written, but I was looking at it today, and something just kinda crossed my mind, and there were two checks written out to the Heinemann Library. Not the Heidman. I wish they would have, and, but they weren't. It's called the Heinemann Library, and one for a little over, almost $50, $600, and one just under $100. But I guess my question is, why are we buying resources yet from a publishing firm that provided a lot of inaccurate information regarding literacy and reading methods? I mean, why would we still be purchasing, I guess is the question. And no one has to answer it right now, I just have a question, and maybe it can be answered at a, or getting answered tonight. It's fine.
Well, if you'd like, I can answer it, the director of teaching and learning can answer that question for you.
Any research that we purchase by curriculum is a resource or part of a framework that was board approved at some time. So, there will come a time, by virtue of the Read Act, that we will have to change the nature of some of the resources we adopt, but until such moment as that passes board action, I'm obligated to stay with the board approved framework. Does that make sense?
Oh, no, it's best to, well, it does and it doesn't, but I'm the.
The follow up is, I don't know exactly which one, because we buy lots of stuff, and it may not have been my office that purchased this. Right now, at this time of year, what's happening is, as you see, is the number of sections at the elementary are in flux. So, there are times when we identify that if we're going to have a new second grade classroom, I may not have enough materials in my warehouse to staff that, so I gotta go real quick, buy something, get it to it. The criteria I use is this part of the adopted curriculum for that level. Okay?
So, I have a quick follow up question on that.
Sure.
This particular publisher, are you familiar with them?
We've used Heinemann for 25 years.
Okay, so, what I think of your, you say is, elements of the catalog are things that you are saying are part of, that previously, what we now consider to be the flawed model, right?
Yeah.
I don't have the words in your mouth, please, please stay. I guess my, where I'm trying to get to with my question is, is it fair to say that as a publisher, they have a variety of different resources, so what we're purchasing may or may not be on the list of things that, that we would now probably not include as a board, right? Or, I mean, are they known for just dispensing stuff that's specifically tied to like three queuing or whole language?
Oh, no, they have a variety of resources. They are the primary publisher for Fontis and Penel materials. And it is probable, I can't see without seeing.
Fair enough, yep.
It is probable, it's an F and P resources.
Okay, I just wanted to understand it from my own, I think the question is a workshop question.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so any other questions as it relates to the consent calendar? If not, I can add a motion to approve. Sorry. So, we have a motion from Director Spearman, a second from Director Heinemann, to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion or question? Hearing none, only favors, signify the same.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent calendars, motion here.
So, then Director Boyles, my understanding, well, the PSEO contract agreement, uh, new business number eight.
Yep, so we can do that as first action item after the ADA, after Director TC.
You sure can't move it to no one else.
Okay. You're up. We now have Reed TC, Director Building and Grounds for ADA Playground Presentation. Welcome to the show, Mr. TC.
Good evening. Right, well, nothing flashy to present to you yet, or anything to share officially. Back in, I want to say January or February timeframe, at Public Comment here, we've had a couple of people come in and talk to us, parents come in and talk to us about concerns they have with our playgrounds, and playgrounds that are appropriately inclusive for kids of all, of all walks of life, all disabilities included. And so, at that time, after the meeting, we had discussed about coming back to you with an update as to where we sit, right? As, as there's new board members on the board here, we wanted to make sure everybody understood kinda where we're at. So, today, actually on Saturday, I received the draft report from our consultant. So, let me back up just a quick second. The district has previously used a consultant to look at our buildings from an accessibility standpoint, so back in 2015 timeframe, 2014, 2015, just prior to us doing our full physical needs assessment for Blueprint 181, we consulted with a company, JQP Incorporated, and they specialize in doing nothing but accessibility. Mainly in buildings, but they also are certified playground inspectors as well, and so that caught my eye, that we've already used them, they're accessibility experts and consultants, and they also are certified playground, national certified playground inspectors. So, we enlisted their services to help us out with looking at all of our playgrounds. There are 10 of them that we have, where we have physical play structures, so we typically only put playgrounds in up through fifth grade, through elementary levels, but we also have them at our Level Four Special Facility in our childhood buildings too. So, we have 10 playgrounds, uh, buildings. We have nine of those reports here in draft format right now. I just wanna give you a few talking points today, as I'm still waiting for the final report to come over from JQP, which I would expect to see in about three weeks or so here. They're doing a very deep dive into it. Twelve, really 11 and a half, 12 of our playgrounds have accessible routes from the building to the structures. Two of those, we need to just really make minor modifications to, to have an accessible route where students can get from the building to the playground container areas where we have all of the equipment. The remaining analysis is gonna be looking at ADA standards and what we can do for recommended improvements and repairs that we need to better accommodate inclusive play for all students. Again, that report is being finalized in the coming weeks. So, my initial reaction to this report along with the ADA is that we have a number of small improvements that we have to make repair wise. So, they looked at each one of our facilities, and they went by piece by piece, literally slide by slide, rope by rope, and bolt by bolt, and identified where we are safety wise as well as accessibility. And so, they wrote those down by site into three categories, like a high, medium, low repaired need, and so we're gonna address the high, high needs items right away. There's not a lot of age, like, really not that many when we look at the totals here, just as an example, Baxter Elementary, of the two, the two things we need to do, we just need to add some wood chips to some of them. So, really, we're sitting in pretty good shape. Plus, the biggest thing for us is gonna be, when we get this final report back, is to really understand, what do we need to do to make sure that these structures are inclusive for all the kids that go to school here? If not, not only that go to school here, but also visit our playgrounds on nights and weekends. We are, we do have them open for the communities to use after school hours. So, that's kinda where we're at with it. I just wanna provide you an update, make sure that you heard back from us, that we are working on it, we are looking at what options we can do here. As we get those recommendations back, I will bring them back either to the Facilities Committee, meetings that we have coming up here, or back to a subsequent board meeting if needed. Otherwise, we will work them into our capital plan in the coming years, or we can look at reprioritization of projects this year, if we really so need to, to get structures in place that are inclusive for all students. Can I answer any questions that you may have?
I have a question, neither. And what happens to the money that has been raised, the PTAs for some of the different playgrounds?
Yep, so, a perfect example of that, and Mr. Stanek's in the audience tonight, and the Garfield group has done a, had a wonderful fundraiser here recently, and we are actually this week gonna be installing zip lines at Garfield. So, one thing that has been done in the past, you know, there are ideas that are brought forward to the local sites, and the local sites administer those parent teacher organizations, and so, whether it be climbing walls, playground equipment, whatever it might be, those POs and PTA shoot for fundraising for and those types of things. Now, some conversations I've had with Principal Kennedy and a few others have been, you know, what, how, when we, when we identify those ideas, how can we maybe think about an idea that benefits all the kids, right? Making sure we're looking at it with that lens in mind, so that whatever we're doing, we're putting in that it's all, so.
All the kids in the justice.
At that site, yep, yep. Because, and the PTO is typically our site specific, yep.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
Thank you. Mr. TV, I have, here's two questions I have, or two comments I have, and Superintendent Khan, and he, and I sent you a email, I think it was, regarding a trust for public land grant for playgrounds.
Yep, yep.
What, I don't recall the timeline, are we gonna be done with the report? I mean, there's some significant debt money available through that, through trust for public land.
Yep.
And what's, what would be the timeline for us to be able to apply for those funds?
Yeah, that's the, one of the criteria was having an identified plan of what you're gonna do with the money.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it'd be nice to say, hey, we wanna make accessibility improvements, but then the states can look at it and say, what do you wanna do, right? So, that's why we are pushing, and I've been, I've been probably pestering, so to speak, JQP to get us this report over here. I've emailed them multiple times over the last week and a half, and they've been really great, they've been very communicating with me, and they've been giving me draft reports to present to you here tonight, but I really wanna get that final report so we can apply for a specific project as their call allows you where we have our biggest needs.
We're right in the foundational block, the other thing is, it's a cycle, so if we miss the first window, it'll be a cyclical, it's the money that they leave from the department that updates. So, there's multiple avenues of how we can pursue some accessibility piece to beyond that specific grant as well. So, I think the biggest thing, the one grant you need forwarded to us really looks at engaging, so one, having a plan, and the next thing is having a committee that exists within that site that has active involvement between the student, parent, staff, so I'm gonna keep hearing, I'll read, and Jody, who will, I think that's kind of one of the focus areas. There are dollars that can limit to the site, but there's avenues to pursue. So, that exact, I'd have to go back and pull up the deadline, but I also know it's a grant cycle, so if we miss one, there's just a, the next one, the battle comes. We'll continue to explore as we do the pieces in place.
So, we'll be, if it doesn't happen this year, we'll be in line to apply next year again?
Our goal is, if it's not that specific, again, there's multiple avenues to express when it comes to ADA accessibility, that's your first one.
Well, thank you, Reed, for pestering, never keep pestering.
Absolutely.
Because I really believe that we have a good case to secure some dollars for our playgrounds, especially for our disabled children in our playgrounds. And I'm gonna thank you too, the Garfield folks, for all they do for raising money for that project, and all the PTAs that raise money for the projects that are special to all children. Second thing I want to make is, I know that in a town called Proctor, Minnesota, up by Duluth, they just ribbon, they just did a ribbon cutting for playground for everybody. And it took, it took a number of years to do it, but it's unbelievable. And so, I would encourage us to look at other communities and other school districts on a collaborative effort, to, and in particular, this playground for everybody up in Proctor, look at, because they raised a significant amount of money, it's been through grants and other fundraising options, and so, please pursue that.
Yep, I, adding on to your comments here, you know, I think that for the last four years, we've been hyper focused on making improvements to our facilities inside, right? We've looked at, we've looked at, we've added, I can't, probably over 12 to 14 different elevators throughout the buildings, we've looked at classroom modifications, we've looked at restrooms, we've looked at all kinds cafeterias, all, all these spaces, we've made significant improvements inside, and we've kind of left the rest of our district kind of just sit, I know, right? I mean, we've just kind of been running them as they were, as they are. Athletic facilities, right? Long range facility planning stuff, we've been looking at our athletic sites, grounds, and all of the other associated spaces that we have as a district. And so, I think what's gonna be nice here now, as Blueprint 181 is concluding, is to go back and look at this, and Director Ward and Mr. Boyles shared, you know, I've got a lot of ideas on how we can make those improvements. That was just recently, this last weekend in St. Cloud, it was at the Riverside Park, and their playground had artificial turf. I tried, we tried to grow grass around here, and I look at all my principal, I hear, and they're all shaking their heads. What do our playgrounds turn into in the spring and fall? Mr. Ward, next to the football field down there, what'd it look like in the fall? Just a big old mud pit, right? So, a lot of improvements that I think we can make moving forward, and maybe change the way we do things a little bit, and I think it would be for the better here. So, we've got a lot of great ideas. Stay tuned, I think we'll put something together for us, and we'll put some targets on paper where we can partner with our POs, and we can look at grants, we can do some things in relation for some really nice facilities around here, and adding on to what we already have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for, before we turn loose? There you go, sir. All right, we move on to the new business, and as we move the PSEO agreement with CLC to the top line this morning.
Just a real quick recap, the new contract, there is 1256 per credit, that's a 2% increase from last year, and that's if the extension is, if that's possible. So, if you have any other conflicts, then it should be stated for those that are in the form. Not sure if there's any other questions, or if there's anything to be addressed.
That's correct. So, given that it was on consent calendar, aren't anticipating any questions, does anybody have questions to come?
Just, first, do we know, I think CIS, PSEO, all of it is good for our children, for our students, but I know the PSO, PSEO is a fight, is a finance, beautiful financial dream, versus CIS. So, do we know how many CIS kids we have versus PSEO kids?
It is a lot smaller, so.
Which is a lot smaller?
The CIS.
It is?
Yes. It's the size of the bills. It's like, I can't know.
Can I have, no, Principal Ross, can I still honor her? So, we have 15 college in the school courses, correct? And so, we look at the, the licensing requirements have been increased for our existing staff that live at college in the school. And our PSEO, just because of the broad range in that ADA, we were brainer, we have CLC, the little block right out the, the back door and the out across of the campus, so we've had a large PSEO participation for quite a few years. We did do a whole cost analysis because it's definitely been a full term PSEO contract. We found out the most cost artificial way for us, so the district is holding on to some of those dollars as well. And there is some, but college, college in the school versus one meaning faculty. There's certain licensure requirements that we can be pushing for faculty. Um, the other piece is just very appealing to people who live in this area and, um, except for like just a wonderful partner. Because of that partnership too, I think they're very, very engaged as well, by the way, it's a partnership.
If we could have a contract that is, it is directly built to MBE and makes you the bill, but then they also claim to students and with a map on it and a piece for us to claim the student and pay us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Do you know how you're getting old? I paid five dollars a credit dollar when I'm on college. John, you might have, I don't know what you pay me, John, here, because I don't know what you pay me for a credit dollar. Two hundred and fifty-six, man, that's getting up there.
All right, thanks Marcy. I have one, one motion to approve.
So, second.
I have a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director Heidman. Any further discussion? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All see a sign. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Now back on track of new business with the approval of the revised 2324 and 2425 school calendars for snow days. Mr. Murph.
Good evening. The difference is the change that we're looking at is not a change to dates in the calendar. It's the designation of the identified make, snow make up days. So for both calendars, the first and two identified snow make up days is the president's day holiday. Then the second one is the last in service, full in service day of the calendar year, which in the first year is in, um, April first or 4-1. And the second one, I believe, is 4-21. If there are more than two days that need to be made up, then the expectation is that we will add non-student contact days to the end of the year to make up the difference between the number of snow days minus the two make up days.
Going back to the old days report.
Yeah, this is, this is an original policy.
Yep.
I had to practice saying it because I never was part of it.
So this was based on a community feedback, indeed, that was collected and it's been, uh, in conversation with Garfield units.
Johnny.
I, I missed what you said. I couldn't hear me. That, that was my question. Did I have all Garfield units read in?
Yes.
Positively.
I wasn't.
So, well, the meeting group that we worked with, because who this is going to impact, because we have opportunities within our contract of how these days are made up contractually. So there's sets of different employers that can access that have been in place. The specific group we talked to, um, because, uh, workdays will be made up was our certified unit. So it's your need confer. But beyond that, when you look at their contractual agreements, whether it's clerical, whether it's, uh, speech assistance, there are opportunities for those days to be made up in order for, okay.
So they've all responded positively, yes, or yes?
I'm not even going to defer.
Yeah, certified unit agreed to what was being proposed, so we confer. Otherwise it's been addressed contract.
Okay.
So beyond that, I can add a individual positive statement to the contract space.
So Mr. Murph, will you remind me how many student contact days we're required to have? And then how many will we have if we have more than two make up days?
You're required to have 165 student's contact days by statute. But currently, the contract yields 160 left. So there's, there's always some moving to do there.
I'm going to give you my instruction on that for 21 days of that.
Oh, on that's right.
But that's different at the high school, middle school, elementary, but we're headed all three, not total numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Murph? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will, uh, I guess that's nighttime, so we will, um, add the motion for approval of the, the two school calendars for snow days. This is in, by Director Murph. Director Ward. A motion from Director Brecken with a second from Director Spear. Any further discussion? Chair.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, I know this has been discussed before again, but I just want to voice my opposition to the titling of, uh, winter break and, uh, uh, spring holidays. Uh, I think there should be Christmas and Easter. Um, that's all I'm doing.
So, no, any? Thank you, Director Heidman. Any further commentary or questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, see them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
No.
Motion carries four with one.
No, it's me. When you put snow days on the calendar, you know, you never get to have one. Just saying, if you go back historically, well, we've had snow days. You never got to have one. So I'm hoping that, yeah, no weather hauls.
All right, now is the approval of the ratification of the custodian contract for 2324 and 2425 school years and the memo of understanding as presented.
So while I, you guys previously took the board memo, the red line, so you basically had to be, uh, edit on that for the custodian unit. Um, we did, uh, a few different things. So we did a restructure of the classification from going from eight, basically we could implement lanes, uh, to seven. And then we also gave salary adjustments for each of the two years within the contract. And we increased longevity, job-specific licenses such as a quiddo license and a third shift inferential. We did a restructure of vacation accruals to allow for them to get the accrual sooner as well as, again, there was a cap once you hit 25 years or something, there's like stopped. I'm not sure where I came from, going after it. Uh, and that just, um, to my, your project changes. Thank you for, for members that are joining us.
Well, I was going to say thank you to you and Marcy for all, you know, sometimes we, or, I don't know if it's lucky or unlucky enough to have front row seats to some of this stuff. You guys do excellent work in the sessions. There's a lot of back and forth. And of course, thanks to, uh, Directors Ward and Don Dullner for jumping into that and I will continue. Any questions for? Entertained motion approved contract as presented contracts.
So.
A second.
So we have a, uh, a motion from Director Ward with a second from Director Brecken. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries one. Right, Angie still in the seat for another round. Uh, this time it's the approval of the ratification of the educational assistance contract for the 23, 24 and 2425 school years.
And so, you know, similar, we kind of go through the package work with the negotiations team to kind of figure out the priorities of the group. But with this group, we continually had a focus on raising that starting wage. Um, back when I started in 2018, it was 1061, but this new contract, the starting wage will be $16 an hour. So, um, just an acknowledgement of the trends that they would do. Um, we continue to keep moving that forward with also considering the health insurance, which has always been kind of a barrier and we discussed multiple times. So we were able to get that increased and then we had did additional rates of pay for the other steps as well. And then, um, so had an increase in 2324 and again, another increase in 2425. We did do a little bit of shift to district insurance contributions to try and leverage some of the funds from that portion to be any hourly rates, um, in consideration of how many of the members actually lose insurance. So we're trying to begin prioritize the needs of the group. Added some continuing education money for the nurses that work in our school. So they can get their information towards their licensing rules and help the NRM. Added that into there, um, gave some flexibility and personal time to increase based on years of service. So instead of just maybe saying at that two days forever, the longer you're here, the more personal days you can obtain. And then carry over to, I don't know, I think it was us. And then just my, uh, check in which changes. Any questions?
Chair.
Director Heidman.
Comment? Uh, EAs, TAs, so very important. We need more of them. We need them in K through three. We need them. We're going to do a literacy and a read app and we're going to get involved with that. My opinion is we start spending that type of money on a literacy and a read app. Not saying we're going to, we're not taking money and throwing it down a hole, but I'll tell you one thing. If we had EAs and TAs in these grades, man, would it help, would it help those kids? I had the opportunity to be at Riverside and Elise Smith, uh, fourth grade teacher. There's a lady that works there, her, it's grandma. Someone help me out. They call her grandma.
Trula Betty.
Trula. She's been in that classroom for 15 years or so. And when I was in, that makes a whole bit of difference. I'm not even, I'm not even a licensed teacher. But having T in there helped so much for my day. We need to find a way to get TAs in more classrooms. That's my comment.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
Thank you, Director Heidman. Um, because you're right, uh, spot on, in my opinion as well. I had the opportunity to, um, first of all, uh, thank you to all educational assistants. I was blessed to have remarkable educational assistants work with me, well, when I was, uh, working with EBD kids, emotional behavior disorder kids, and they, uh, the value is priceless, period. Along with, because along with all our staff, period. Custodians, you know, all, all of you folks are currently in, sitting in education. But the point that I want to make is I have the opportunity, we, 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 we have board and administration have been talking about some class sizes as well, situations and class sizes and things as such. And I talked with a 20-year veteran teacher, uh, elementary teacher that, um, um, is, is trying to run reading groups along with their classes. And ever since we've eliminated, uh, teaching assistants, and this is part of the literacy deal as well, ever, ever since we kind of eliminated, uh, teaching assistants in K through three, um, it's been come, become more difficult to do justice to our literacy program and our reading programs. And we, we all understand and know, we, we all understand and know the importance of K three building blocks for educational, um, success in the future. So I second, uh, Director Heidman's, uh, comments. And again, thank you to the teaching assistants for all that you do. Uh, list that you gave us touched my heart and, um, it's never ending. So thank you very much. Just a comment as well.
All right, so we entertain a motion approved.
Contracts as presented.
So.
All right, so we have a motion from Quick Draw, Director Heidman, with a second from, uh, Director Brecken. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Motion. All right, Ann Marie, it's up next. We're going to review and approve the buy policy. We'll discuss the approval of setup policy.
So, uh, last spring, um, Scott Lightens, who's a major music professor, came for the board to ask for the ability to serve alcohol at events in the Gitchi Center for there. Um, at that time, we went through and crafted an appendix to policy, um, now two appendix D that laid out the procedure. Within appendix, uh, when, within policy number two, some revisions were made that, um, allowed for the service and sale of alcohol in the Gitchi Center for the arts during the summer months school meeting. Um, and then we also decided that we review this policy annually to see what happens have gone and to see, um, if any changes should be made. Um, I have since, so this is our annual review of the policy. And I do have, um, a few requests that have come in that are basically asking us to expand the policy. We have three different events looking to serve, um, alcohol at the event, um, in our potential future. Um, and there may be more that will come in after this. So they all will be placed during the school year, which would require an expansion of, um, the summer months. One has requested to serve it in the parking lot outside of the event. Um, and then I've also had a request to be able to bypass the, um, currently the procedural policy says that they must contact the caterer who would actually serve the alcohol or they serve it and or serve and sell the alcohol. I've had a request from the nonprofit themselves to actually be able to purchase and serve the alcohol. This would be, um, part of their, uh, temporary liquor license that they, that they're required to get. We enacted the extra step of having them contract with a caterer rather than serving directly. So I've had, um, their request to bypass that. So I'm very excited to see if you would like to entertain, um, any of these, I said, a short cluster expansion of this policy. And we were, we can break it and go on it.
I'd like to open it up for discussion and questions for Ann Marie.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
Um, thanks for bringing this forward. Um, do, have we gotten any kind of response as to, have they applied for city licensure, you know, for this?
I, I'm not sure if the upcoming events have gotten that approved.
The reason I ask that is, are they, are they qualified? Does it even, is it even?
Right.
Going to happen? If, if the city says, no, for, for example, um, do they have, um, do they have enough security?
Um, so we have some policy requirements around that, John?
Yeah.
And then on the licensure part, that's one of the prerequisites originally. It was when we first voted on this last year, the idea of making the music caterer was to ensure that everybody was using a license was on equal footing. But in reality, the, the strictures around these organizations being able to even do an event in a public building are, are pretty tight. So, and then you have city statute wrapped around that.
Yep.
So the city statute that wrapped, is wrapped around it is, and you can correct me if I go off on the weeds here, but, uh, they have to be a nonprofit. They have to have a physical headquarters address in the city of Briner. That means nonprofits from Nisswa and Baxter cannot do, uh, events in the Gitchi Center right now based on city statute. Has nothing to do with the school district, that's city statute.
They can't apply for that.
So they will not give them a, a temporary liquor license. They will only do it for nonprofits that are headquartered in Briner. Did I say everything right?
Yes.
All right, just one, one thing that raised a flag with me was that inside Gitchi versus outside of Gitchi.
Yep.
That's, that raised a red flag with me from a liability standpoint, quite frankly, um, and security issues and a lot of issues come up with, within that. So that's why I'm asking that question as well.
It's a good question. Director Heidman.
John, are you referencing the, the parking lot? The sale of liquor in the parking lot?
Is that where they're going to be?
That's what I think.
Oh, no, what, and I have that same thing popped in my head. How are you going to police people coming in and out of the parking lot? I mean, it's putting up barricades and I, you know, it's just a question.
And I think just that, it's serving alcohol and kind of everybody at the school.
No, I mean, well, we do not have CP because we were in the, I mean, we talked about this in the night of our bus or in favor of a parking lot. I mean, it was like a, a bridge too far. One of the objections from the two board members that voted against this the last time it was on the agenda was optics. Um, and some of us disagreed that somebody driving by, looking through plate glass into the interior of the Gitchi City Lobby, you know, that was going to cause social damage to have somebody see you. Somebody walking with a glass of wine with their people having a tailgating party with right in the lot. To me, those are two very different things.
Right, agree.
Well, I think it goes back to the context, um, you know, when we first started talking about this, we set an impetus for it when we did the, the bonding for the buildings. We kind of made a promise to the community, we thought this was a community building. And as such, we were going to use it for community events. We were going to welcome, couple of teams for community events. And this was a part of the deal they thought they were getting when they asked for that. So I feel like there's still a, that promise that they did about it, I think they've done well, but we're not. But currently, we don't feel that.
Director Brecken?
I'm just curious, this is an important, what kind of events are these different organizations doing now? The first one would be with the Church of Cash, which is already approved. That is for sure coming in, that event will happen. They wanted to do a kind of a pre-party type of tailgating. The second event is Catholic parishes are doing a C lobby event where they'll be serving a meal. And they wanted to be able to have, I'm not sure if they want his wine or what they'll serve, was that event? And I believe they'll be having an event here after their Sunday dinner. And then the JCs are looking for space to kick off their ice fishing event where they're gonna bring in some type of performer, they're supposed to find that. They wanna have some type of pre-party as well within the season, that's in February. So those are the three that have come in right now. And we've had other people request, or with some interest or whatever. These are official requests that they put in. Some of the events will probably happen either way, I wonder if they'll. But sometimes it might make them choose to do a different venue as well.
Correct.
What, just looking at estimated cost, who, who cleans up all this mess? Does that, does that get charged back to a specific budget within the school district?
We would charge for any custodial hours that were spent on an event. We directly charge for those hours. With the alcohol, we do have our, but it is covered out with the caterer right now. So any litter from that event has to be taken out by the caterer.
Who, but who actually, who there are this, who's actually charged with the cleanup responsibility?
The caterers, all custodians, best of all events.
That falls back onto that budget?
Well, no, falls back onto where we're licensed or where we rent the facility.
It gets charged in the community education.
And I'm assuming that money flows back into the budget then of the building maintenance budget.
If they're working hours toward an event, then those hours get charged toward the community education budget. And it's our job to remove it from, from the facility, from other accommodations, even on their space.
But to get to his question.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm asking the wrong question. Okay, ultimately, does this money flow back into Director TC's budget? I mean, he's providing, he's providing the custodial staff to clean up, right?
Correct.
Okay, does that money flow back into Director TC's budget? He's, he's, he's providing the people. He's providing the, the workers. Someone's paying for that extra help, right? For cleaning. Where does that, where do those hours ultimately flow back?
It depends on if they're doing it as part of their regular day coming in and cleaning in that space. Or if they're doing it as part of a cleanup of an event. If they do it as part of a cleanup of an event, typically it's outside of their normal working hours. They usually, actually, they get double time to do that work. And we charge that out to the clients. And those extra hours are billed to community education.
So as a cost center, you're the cost center that bears the expense of the custodian for those extra hours. So the fee that the, the, the renter uses, pays in this case, goes back into that budget? Because that's where we're paying that over time.
Right, and we just have a set amount of fifty dollars per hour custodial that we charge. And that, that it kind of balances out some custodial depending on what they earn per hour, depending on the times. And that's what they need rental, not just the Gitchisie Bay.
So it applies to softball field?
So it's not decreasing the buildings and ground books for that?
Well, yeah, no, I ask it because, you know, I mean, if that organ, if that group of people is in lack of service, the money should flow back into that budget somehow. Or they're not being charged for, you know, like I said, I'm probably asking it the wrong way. I think you quiz it up a little bit because it goes back.
It's net zero. So if there's an added expense related to the work that they're doing because there's an extra event in there, both the expense and the revenue related to that that offset each other, they zero out, go through community education because that's who owns the rental contents. So any extra, it would be the same thing, I think it, isn't it the same thing with the baseball fields or anything like that too? If we have people that kind of come in and do that stuff outside, it's more of a, it's kind of.
An extra outside of, yeah.
It's, yeah. It's net zero, it's net zero on the labor side of the support. So like, we have to staff it for custodial services. We charge that back to the request or the renter, right? Whether it's.
And then if you have additional expense in kind, you can charge it to the other cost center, the community education cost center, right, if you're.
They provide the, Community Ed provides the rental agreement. They provide the estimate on labor hours to cover the cost of custodial. We get the actual hours after the event. And then we charge that back to them, the renter. We give them an estimate on the front end. You know, the other costs that go along with it, supplies, heat, power, all those wear and tear on the buildings, those are not part of a chargeback that we charge to the renters. It's part of, we're trying to offset those costs with some of the revenue that we rent for these, for these buildings and these sites, right? So when you look at the different tiered structures of policy nine oh two, and you look at, we charge X amount of dollars for a football field to a tier one group. We charge X amount of dollars for a tier four, whatever the different tiers are. You know, Gitchisie Bay, Toronstrom, conference rooms, whatever it might be. Where, that's where we started to put in some money into that policy to offset and bring back revenue to the district to cover all of the other expenses besides custodial support, right? I, I don't think we're there yet on where we need to be. But going from zero to where we're at now was a big jump in itself. I think we, I think there's still conversation that we have about what's right for these spaces.
Well, because there's not any reasonable way to calculate the exact cost of those, heating that space for a particular evening.
There, there is, yeah, we can get, we could do a deeper dive. But at the time, we were, you know, these buildings are brand new. You know, it's like, kind of, what kind of mileage am I gonna give the car? They tell you on the sticker, but you don't really know until you drive it. Same sort of deal. We've got some history now, a couple of years worth of history of what it takes to heat Brainerd High School. And I can break it down by the GZ. And I can look at some of those things where we could start to put some data behind our rental rates and say, hey, it's.
Okay, so in theory, we were deeply concerned about the budget buckets. The two different buckets that we're talking about here.
Yep.
We could put some numbers around that, build that into the future rental contract, and then do a chargeback between the two cost centers and shift the money back into that budget if we needed to. Right? But nothing in this policy really speaks to that anymore.
Not yet, but again, we went from nothing to something. And we're just, I think we continue to develop that policy out.
Did that help?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
Do we, do we allow alcohol? Okay, so I'm, I'm, my whole thing is about indoor versus outdoor. In the building versus out of the building, okay? Do we allow alcohol in any outdoor events at this point?
No.
Outside of buildings?
Nowhere in the district except the Gitchi.
Excuse me?
Nowhere else in the district, except the Gitchi.
Right. And, and I, 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 I thought that was the case. I know that we, we had an event this, this, this summer that the school collaborated with other government agencies and celebrations and things as such. And there was some actually damage done with, at that event that is gonna cost the school this year. Correct? Mr. TC?
Which, which one are we?
Excuse me?
Which one are you referring to?
There was some damage to the tennis courts and to the practice football field and wasn't there? At the fireworks?
Oh, well, yeah, that's, yeah, there's, yep, yep, community use, yes, correct.
Okay, so that, isn't that going to run into some costs to us?
It is, yeah.
Okay, so that, that, that's one of the things I wanted to clarify. Inside versus outside. And we can talk about costs for custodial staff and cleanup and everything else. But all of a sudden now, there's other issues that come up and, and costs with inside versus outside. And that, that doesn't mean it wouldn't happen inside as well. But the likelihood of it happening, of, of damage happening outside versus inside, to me, is more significant.
We're talking about bigger spaces, harder to lease, right? And then on the interior, we did have a request.
Yeah.
Well, I don't remember which group it was, I guess it's really not important which. But they wanted, they also were, oh, I think it was Lamp actually, had requested, wasn't it? To take beverages inside the auditorium. Which, when Sarah and I heard that, we were like, meh. Because of the cleaning issues and some of that kind of stuff. Because you can think about the way the GZ lobby is put together. It's a heck of a lot easier to deal with any sort of mess in, in that space with most of it's tarazzo, right? Or, yeah, or chorizo. I always get those confused.
Chorizo stuff.
Once a sausage, once a fork.
Yeah.
Currently, right now, we don't have any, we're about to, and not a choice.
So those are some other minor things that kind of came up. But the idea, at least in our minds when we were putting this on the agenda, was, you know, that get a feel for how the board felt about internal, outside versus inside. And then, you know, a couple of the other nuances would be the caterer versus the non-caterer. So there's probably some discussion we have to have on that as well.
I think one of the reasons when we initially wrote this policy is that we looked at the caterer as another level of control because they have depending on over-serving and different things like that. However, it, it does become kind of expensive for some of these nonprofits to come in and offer. They're paying for security, they're paying for a temporary liquor license on top of having a caterer that also has a license. So that's some of their concern among those nonprofits looking to.
Director Spear?
And the thing that I liked about the caterer language was all of the containers and lots of, all those things go out to the caterer that are not up in the building, that the event is over. And I feel a little bit more comfortable knowing that's transferred risk happening even if you don't use a caterer, that I'm comfortable with that a bit. But having those packages in the building, I still want that to be the building, the event is over.
Yeah, and we talked about this the other day. There's a little bit of a slippery slope here because the idea is if, 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 the, the objective of the event is to raise money and us essentially dictating that they have to bring in a caterer creates a dent in their ability to raise that money in the case of Lakes area music festival actually costs them money to offer alcohol. They're better off not to do it from a, from a fundraising perspective. But on the other hand, are you very encouraged to extend the amount of time, the amount of alcohol that you dispense during that time to make sure you maximize your return on your investment, right? So now you're running the risk of potential over-serving. So there's just a lot of layers to it. And I, I think the, the real key to this thing is making sure that we're deliberate. And what we were, we tried to be extremely deliberate last year when we did this with the idea of really being extremely limited in terms of guardrails everywhere we could think of to just see what would happen with what we did. And with very minor exception, there's really been no issue or anything like that that, that we've been able to bear. So it kind of comes down to, you know, that, that caterer piece comes down to a couple of things when we talked about this. I mean, the caterers obviously have more training on how to serve and who to serve alcohol than random volunteers for a nonprofit, right? So I don't know that it deeply concerns me, but it's something to think about. The caterer has some reputational risk if they don't do their job properly because they have other clients, and if they have bad experience with the school district, everybody's been to know about it. So there's, there's an element there. The only concern I really have with the caterer language is that it, it does make it a little cost prohibitive for the, the entity that's renting the facility. So now, really have my money made up on it. I'd be curious to see what each one of you thinks about that piece.
If you didn't have a caterer, a nonprofit, would just bring in, they would just purchase their own alcohol, bring it in, have somebody serve it and dispose of whatever after and.
We can flex the contract to, to lay additional burdens on them for cleanup and carry out and all that kind of stuff too.
So for example, we might have a banquet in the lobby and serve box wine by the glass with that rather than having to have caterer provide that.
So right now, the policy only includes serving alcohol for Lakes area music festival?
No, any nonprofit would have to be the summer.
Any nonprofit in the summer. So far, it has only.
Any, or, came to me during the day during the summer right now. It's gonna be eighteen hours.
And was we intent to not offer alcohol to the facility?
Originally, it was to test it in the summer to kind of just see if we could control the facility, if we could control the people, and all of these different things to kind of get a feel for what the optics look like at, as you, you know, just to experiment with what does it look like when there's an event going on. And today, we had, we've had two, well, two galas for the Lakes area music festival. What other events have we had without alcohol?
Just their events.
Just their events.
They have like four concerts at the Yala, so we do serve both. So what we're approving tonight is whether or not we extend that alcohol policy.
That's part of it. I mean, we can, we can, we, the, what we're voting on tonight is what to tell Anne Marie to go back and draft.
Okay.
If we want to modify the policy at all. There's no requirement, it's not incumbent upon us to change it at all if we don't want to. But if we want to continue to raise use of the space, you know, leave that each director with their own. That, we can, we can say, we can say to Anne Marie, we can say go back and draft it, but draft it without the caterer or with the caterer, or however we want to do it.
You're moving a summer requirement?
Yeah.
And right now, the hours of service are five to nine. So it's a limited number.
So what are you recommending, I guess would be? Are you recommending that we go into, we take and extend the policy as written, but basically take it year-round instead of just the summer? Keep the hours the same, the nonprofit requirement the same? And then the only outstanding question as a board, then if we all agree with that, would be outside versus inside? I think we all weighed in on that. And then the last thing would be the caterer versus the non-caterer, right?
And we could write it so that if they are allowed to not use a caterer, that we could have some very specific requirements about what is served, how it's served, and how it's taken out.
And then one other minor piece that's not, it may be a contract issue. I think it's a contract issue, not a policy issue, but it could be both. Security. Today, security is only required to be there as long as the alcohol is being served.
Right.
And so we may want to consider that. Because alcohol is being served on our premises in the event, they go past nine o'clock. It might be who else who require them to keep security in place through the duration of the event itself.
Probably things like that.
So that's one other wrinkle that came up when we were having this discussion. Okay, somebody's wondering what school board members do when they're not in this room. We have a lot of meetings.
So Anne Marie, we're clear as mud then, right?
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna take a shot at this. I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy number nine oh two, adding the expansion of hours to include the school year outside of school hours, even the five to nine hours. And striking the language around requiring a caterer. And adding additional language to keep security in place for the duration of the event. Inside.
Inside.
Inside. Does it have cost analysis of what the cost to have a caterer versus not? I don't have that information. That is just a motion. Sorry.
Alright, so we have a motion from Director Spear to revise policy nine oh two. I always want to say one L for some reason. Nine oh two, to expand the current provisions of, of the, of the policy to cover year-round instead of just the summertime. Strike the requirement for renters to bring in an outside caterer. Require security to be in place for the duration of the event. And to continue the prohibition of events outdoors, that they're only inside the Gitchisie Bay Lobby areas. Now, does each director understand all of these talks? Oh, we just, yeah, we, I'm looking for a second on Director Spear's motion.
Awesome.
Right, I'm not gonna go through all of it again. We do have a motion from Director Spear, with a second from Director Heidman, to approve Anne Marie to redraft policy nine oh two with the revisions as outlined in my previous comments. Any further discussion?
Just one? I don't like to, I, I'm not gonna vote for it just because I don't, I think we, we still need to have a licensed caterer.
They need a city license.
What's that?
They need a city license.
Anybody serving alcohol in there has to get a liquor license from the city. They're not allowed to just come in.
My, my point was.
Well, I think you're concerned.
The licensed cater gives us another level of liability issues, in my view, but.
And I'll see your desk. What, what that cost goes versus not? I can find that out, and I can come back, and I can bring up a little bit more information around that, and I can write two different versions of the policy.
On this calls out. We have, we have a definitive call, and we could probably make that a determination now. I'm kind of where Director Ward is. I don't like the cost prohibitive nature of the thing, but I like the added layer. And I think, the other thing that it does from my perspective is, um, you know, again, I, I've only been to one event, and it was the very first one, the Lake City Music Festival Gala, and they did last song. Um, and as I recall, they weren't serving a broad array of alcoholic beverages, at least not at that first one. It was basically wine and beer and cider, I think. Um, have they stuck to that or have they branched out and done mixed drinks or anything like that?
I'm not sure.
Because I think that's the benefit of the caterer would be if you want to do something, then if you're talking about things beyond wine and beer, to my mind, from, from just a general liability and, um, social responsibility perspective, the idea of having random JC bottle beers, just pouring gin, I'm not sure I'm comfortable. All right, well, we have a motion on the table. Do we have some more discussion?
Minister, I'll move the table until next month, and we get something in writing.
But the direction is to go ahead and have her start redrafting and revising.
Correct. Correct.
We have a motion from Director Ward to table, the, with direction given to Anne Marie to redraft the policy to version caterer and non-caterer. Because the board, as it sits now, is in agreement on all the other terms.
Did you get second?
I did not, yes.
Oh, five ahead.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Director Ward, with a second from Director Spear. Oh, yes, Director Hyden.
You know, we talked about liability, uh, that we run this, any of this stuff by our own legal company.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Because, you know, God forbid something tragic happens. They go after everybody. They go after the deepest pockets, you know, and, yeah, you can, you're always going to find an attorney that's going to, you know, find a loophole somewhere, so...
Well, I...
Try to make a mistake as possible for us to begin with, obviously should be our objective. You know, maybe we should just sell popcorn and then play bingo.
The law for elementary schools, they're...
I know.
So, the short answer is there is a, there is a strict requirement on liability insurance. Uh, but it does speak to Director Ward's point about the caterer because, like Randy, you know as well as I do, like, you know, you're dealing with fiduciary matters in a qualified plan, it doesn't matter if you used an outside fiduciary or the employer's still in the courtroom, right?
Yep.
So, it really wouldn't matter, you know, we could put seventeen layers of liability, and if the district gets sued, we'll be in a courtroom court.
Right, that's true.
We can just go like that, though. But that was something we addressed. It was the most, I would say, the most, um, intense concern when we took this up last year.
I think the way to revise the policy, you would just put it back in the council, yes?
Oh, sure. It's been pointed out, so, again, I think a lot of people in public had a lot of interest in the subject, so, I, I'm glad you brought that up because it does create, you know, an understanding that we can do better on this a year ago, and we'll do it again if given...
We got input from both people council and insurance, our insurance agency last year.
Any other questions for Anne Marie? Any further discussion on the motion as to table last presented? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I want to oppose some. All right, go to work. Thank you. All right, now, we have Director Murdaugh, the first reading of policy five one five, protection and privacy of people.
Question, per case of act, about maybe more than one reading of this policy as existing policies.
No, you do not. You know, it's with the changes that remain sensitively in MSBA, people that have this first reading.
I don't, that's what I'm saying. It's a first reading, and I wouldn't want a second.
So, we'll take this under, uh, under action as approval and final, first and final reading?
Yes, please. The primary change is Minnesota state law has restricted its definition of directory information in a way that's more restricted than the federal laws. If you look in section three, D R one, where the federal definition is, there's an awful lot of information that's considered directory information. Minnesota state law in section two, or part two of that section restricts it by removing postal address, email address, and student telephone number. This is not considered directory information. So, that's the primary change. This might have changed the form, including the addition of the suffix of the zip code in Washington DC where you sent it.
Do we have any questions for Director Murdaugh on the policy? We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Director Brecken, with a second from Director Spear to approve first and final reading of policy five one five as presented by Director Murdaugh. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favors, signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, next policy up, Dr. Han with approval in second reading of MSBA policy five one six point five, overdose medication and...
Correct, then, as you give your recall, so, there's been no input since the first reading, this is actually almost the third reading, so there was some community basis that there was a possibility of medication. So, there's been no additional feedback.
Make a motion to favor.
Second. A motion from Director Spear, with a second from Director Ward to approve this second reading of policy, MSBA policy five sixteen point five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, final action item for tonight, approval of the third and final reading of the following MSBA policies, four twenty seven workload limits for certain special education teachers, five oh three student attendance, and five sixteen student medicine, uh, which has been updated to define school site.
Correct, so, since the last reading of the policy, the definition of school site has been added to that policy.
So, I'm making a motion to approve those reading policies.
Thank you, Director Murdaugh.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Director Brecken, with a, a second from Director Spear to approve the three policies, four twenty seven, five oh three, five sixteen, for their third and final reading as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it was a close, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes action items. We're on to committee meeting updates. We're going to start out with the Policy and Community Relations Committee, which, uh, Director Hyden and myself sit on. Director Hyden, the floor is yours.
Well, I'll try and summarize what we did. Please add anything.
We're correct.
We, we're correct. We spent, uh, a lot of time talking about policy six oh six. Uh, we, we've given this, uh, back to staff, started working on changing some things, clarifying things, making it easier to understand, um, et cetera. Also, uh, we found out, uh, the MSBA Summer Leadership Conference, that MSBA is going to be writing a separate policy within policy six oh six regarding library books. Right now, six oh six, at least in this person's, uh, opinion, uh, is that six oh six right now spends, I think, most of the time talking about textbooks and very little on library books. It does bring up...
I was going to correct that, right, because it talks a lot about videos and stuff, too.
Yeah. So, you know, they've taken it upon themselves to come out and write something strictly regarding library books. So, uh, we're probably going to wait till that comes out. When? Did they give any indication?
No indication whatsoever.
Okay, so...
We did ask that. Yeah, John, John, John raised his voice, uh, really beyond what I thought he was capable of, and that's saying something.
So, that'll be, uh, that'll be, uh, brought up again, and probably won't be on the agenda probably until probably September, I mean, without, see what timeframe, I don't know.
I think, well, I, it's a great point. I mean, it's one of those things where we understand the sensitivity around six oh six, and, of course, we have a number of research challenges that are now going through policy six oh six as it's currently constructed, and those will continue to go through. I think one of the things that Director Hyden brought up during that policy committee meeting was an idea that at minimum what we could do is create a schematic or some kind of visual flow chart that, that makes it easier for a community member to understand how the process works instead of, it reads like IKEA, you know, assembly instructions today, it's really kind of difficult to navigate. So, the idea that it's a little bit more visually supportive of somebody that's trying to understand how to navigate the bureaucratic element of it. Uh, I mean, there's, I, I, I would say, even if we, you know, that we, you know, because I, I think what a lot of people don't understand, too, is that the vast majority of the policies that the school district operates under are based on boilerplate templates that come from MSBA. So, virtually every school district in the state operates under mostly the same policies. As a board, we have the ability and the power to modify those policies, and we do. Um, and, and so, six oh six, as they're going to change it, we're going to, we're going to get what, what they do, and we may decide we want to strengthen certain areas of it, provide more clarification, but, um, until we know, like, I, I guess for me, if they came back and said they didn't think they would have a revised library book policy until, like, November, I feel like we'll probably want to move on that faster as a board than waiting for MSBA to dial their i's across all our t's so we can improve. So, I guess, um, where we're at, Director Hyden, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you chaired the committee, but we, we currently have administrative staff, um, working on cleaning up six oh six as though there is no forthcoming one from MSBA, and we believe that's the best course of action for now because we think, we may come up with some language as a result of that exercise that we may use to edit the eventual six oh six that we get from MSBA anyway. Does anybody understand?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure.
Can I ask you, Director Boyes and Director Ward, what was affirming as we went through the legal process of each piece and from that kind of the direction we're going to take with the new policy, twelve of their fourteen talking points are already embedded in their right suggestion of stuff in the policy. So, I think a lot of that proactive thought process is already happening. We just want to make sure that our candidates formally adopt it.
And the other thing is to keep in mind, no community member has leveraged policy six oh six in close to a decade. So, the policy, the last time it was revised was in two thousand and fourteen, which coincidentally, I believe was the last time there was a, a book challenge.
And it's written around, like you said, curriculum-based instruction, not necessarily a resource on the giant, so, there is some improvement.
So, clearly, there are some things in nine years that have changed about that whole atmosphere, you know, community passion notwithstanding, and then, of course, you layer that on top of it, that definitely, um, just to be nice and clear, um, we all, we all hear what everybody's saying. We're, we're taking a look at it, that there's process, there's due process, and there's procedure, and there's policy. A board governs their policy.
I do, I do believe, uh, Mr. Stanek had made a comment when he was down here, they, he challenged in two thousand and twenty-one using the policy. So, it has to have utilized, uh...
It did, yeah. There's different steps that can be resolved along the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should have been clear. It didn't come to fruition.
Yeah.
In other words, it, it never got to the final committee or to the school board. The last time the school board voted on an appeal to a repub, a book challenge, that, at that time, was curriculum challenge, was two thousand and fourteen. So, good clarification, Randy, thank you.
Uh, we also talked about some other policies, uh, most of them were mandated by legislative changes. Uh, we got into, uh, a discussion of internet acceptable use and safety five twenty-four, and I do believe we're going to be looking at that because, uh, the MSBA added, um, some cellphone language to that policy, and we just want to look at it and digest it before we approve a new policy regarding that. Uh, let's see, uh, we also discussed reducing the number of policies that are included in each board agenda, so, I mean...
There's a lot.
The one, the one meeting, there was a, we had a whole raft of it, and it was all because of legislative changes, so a lot of it was just, okay, what changed because of legislation, but there was a lot there, and, uh, that was brought up in, in the discussion as well. Uh, I do believe, uh, for those of you that are not aware, and I think Director Murdaugh has brought up that there's a, he's forming a committee now, and regarding some book challenges, correct?
Correct.
And those, uh, the first meeting, uh, will be held, and I do believe I have the right to document the date and time.
Yeah.
So, is it all filed, Director?
Yep, August eighteenth, uh, at two PM, which will be an organizational meeting, and I believe that's going to be at a large conference room in the high school.
Correct.
And those meetings, current policy six oh six are open to the public.
As are all of our policy committees. Just for the record, too, we had a couple of community members at our policy committee meeting.
Yep.
Would, would, I would go a step further and encourage people to attend, because, like Randy said, you have these rafts of policies that come along. What we try to do to kind of streamline that is deal with it at committee level. So, there are all things, the things happening at the committee level where they'll just roll up to the board level. Like, tonight, you would have seen in the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we had a list of policies, and that's because we went through all of those at the committee level, we ironed them out. So, the idea was to get away from five hour board meetings. Let's go on board meetings, we need, let's... Um, the other thing I would say is...
We have...
The cellphone thing?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we're taking a serious look at. We had a robust conversation about it in policy committee meeting, um, centered a lot around what we would all like. We have a whole bunch of principals here tonight, I think we all know, uh, what they would do if they could do it. Uh, but there, there's a, what we, what we heard from administration was, there's a bit of a gulf between what people would like to do and what we can practically do. Um, and that goes with things like dress code, too, not just cell phones, but, um, it's certainly something that we're, we're keeping an eye on what other districts in the state and the country are doing, kind of grapple with this, because I think, if I hold the room right now, I, I think you'd see a lot of agreement on the subject as relates to cell phones in school. Okay, that's all I really have to clarify in that.
And then, as far as the, uh, student parents, we, we spent a little bit of time on that. Uh, we talked about different, different buildings have different policies, and I think we talked about somehow we can bring that more into line, uh, consistency. I don't know if we got real in-depth talking about that, but, but it was brought up. Uh, we talked a little bit about, well, I should say, I talked a little bit about hats, and, uh, I was convinced that, uh, by good discussion, that hats probably are not, that everyone really, really get too involved with, uh, at the high school. I know, of course, you, uh, I know John and his troops, uh, I've been in the building quite a bit, you don't see, you don't see any hats there at all. As a matter of fact, you don't see cell phones, to speak of, uh, so, different buildings have different, different...
Well, see, if we can read the, the building referendum, we would line all the buildings with let. So, we're now, problems.
Yeah. But there's different age groups, and I understand why we might have different policies regarding appearance and access to cell phones and things like that, but hopefully we can get more consistent on that. That's about it that I have, I don't know, um, Dr. Han, I don't know if you have any adds to that. I know Kevin and I both have spoken quite a bit.
It was a lengthy policy meeting, but the other thing is, the other portion of this was community relations, and it was exciting, Anne Marie and Carol have done hundreds of hours of work, because one of the things is creating a visual, so many, and the people are not coming into our buildings to see in our building, to see what's happening. And so, there's been a concerted effort to kind of create that visual and bring that out so people can access that. So, a lot of people coming to our community, they like to be able to see what the elementary look like on this schedule. So, there's some wonderful videos that have been, been put together, some student response, um, stories that hopefully will start coming out, so I think that's an amazing response. A lot of community requests, um, and then Anne Marie is so excited about that, here to come and... I'm a bush. In this day and age, it's easy to watch a two-minute video and get an answer, and there's sometimes drive all the way up to the building and ask that question directly, so it kind of your spot, so I'm thrilled with what Anne Marie and Carla and the team have done.
And I mean, I think one of our community members that spoke tonight talked about that in great relation to the buildings themselves, and it was something when I ran for school board, I was like, well, we just spent $235 million, we should talk about what we're doing in the buildings.
It's, they did a great job.
There's some great stories in there, we're going to try to get those out, and it's probably.
And we actually, the student response, the students produced by an algraduated graduate high school, we have an amazing video production lab at the high school, a lot of incredible technology and spосе, so that was a great experience. But that committee, that's enjoyable.
That was great, that video lab too, just a little sidebar, we had Director TC was kind enough to take a group on tour one day with me through the high school, we went in there, it was a foreign exchange student from Switzerland that had gone here in 2016, and she'd done the video production session, we took her into the video lab and took the top of her head off, because it was the same space, but everything that they're doing in that, it's really cool.
Thank you for that, it'd be wonderful. But then our next, our next meeting is a ways off, October twenty fifth.
I think we'll be coming together sooner than that over.
Okay.
The policies.
Yeah.
At least the policy working.
So that's all.
Thank you. Next up, we have long-range planning facilities. Who's this?
Cheryl.
I'm Cheryl.
Oh, then the glory falls to you, Director Bracken.
Yeah. So I'm going to have Heidi speak to the LTF and funding issues.
Okay.
And then you're going to have the rest.
I have the rest. So long-term facilities maintenance planning, one of Director TC's main goals is to really try to create more of a ten-year plan that you put out, but really being able to target those. The interesting thing is our funding continues to be inflexible, so they anticipate one level of funding that's changed, which makes us potentially go back to prior tax projects. Like you said, we've had some great improvements with blueprint 181, however, when you look at, how old is the roof on Forbes, you know?
Nineteen.
Nineteen year old, or was, so nineteen-year-old roof that needs to be replaced, so there's some things that have stalled, and that's what long-term facility maintenance is, so really working on that land, responding to the budget. And then we have all those other things, tracks that are inspiring, we're talking about more facilities and sites. So Reed has been challenged with really trying to put that plan together and then work collectively to prioritize. And like you said, the plan was pretty much near completion, and then looking at some policies and some changes based on how things are driven. So, Morticop, Reed did a very riveting training for us on how, I would say, maybe, how we determine rates, how we can certain things purchase, and Reed's a mechanical engineer by trade, and so if you want to hear anything about air handling, cost analysis, why we secure things that certain pervert rates and lock that in, spend some hours with Reed. So pretty complex when you think of a lot of this next school and kids, a lot of facility operation, but that long-term plan is what we're involved in, we're really trying to adapt to.
And just, it's especially fun to tour the catacombs under Wesby, because Director TC gets especially excited down in the ancient spaces underneath Washington.
Okay, so we also talked about the high school farm property. At this point, it's not being used as a high school farm, it's basically, it's become more of a maintenance warehouse for the district. The county board, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county board has requested that the property come off tax, tax forfeited status, and then it becomes our question, do we want to purchase this property or not? And I don't remember how many acres there are, eighty total, but we had a lot of discussion about there's some wetland that we don't really want or need, is it possible to just purchase a sixty roughly acres, okay. So just we kind of gave it back to Reed so that he could get someone crazy on that property, so that we could share with the cross community that would be done with us. And then we own, so we also have the Franklin property. So it was explained that the district leases the gym and theater spaces, and we own the football field space. The lease is also under lease levy funding, and will be done in 2028. So there was a proposal to pay the lease off and put those funds towards something else. So then there was discussion on how we could potentially do that property. Right now, we're using the football field for length grade football, but when we take a look at the next, I think we talked about, was the lower site master planning. Reed also highlighted that the master plans were the lower site, which included soccer fields, a softball field, a baseball field, defined entrances, and a paved trail, walkway, a plaza with academy facilities, just kind of what that planning, we want to master plan. So different organizations are raising funds, but before you use those funds, we want to make sure we have a plan for that area. So needing to kind of look at that and make that plan. So that's pretty much it for long.
We are on, we're trying to.
I'll do the next one.
Yeah, we're going to.
So the next one is student support services, that's similar on that same day. There's been some legislation regarding mascots, so this year, the Minnesota Legislature passed a law that ends the use of native mascots in Minnesota college schools. There are some, as I understand it, some trophy cases that still, and some trophies that still have the mascot on, so just need to take a look at how we get rid of the mascot and honor this legislation. So all logos are visible when the hallway plaques and in the test blocks, so we need to take a look at that. We also talked about Ascenda Health, we have a contact with Ascenda, they have hired a new certified athletic trainer, and we're still looking to acquire one more, practice center at school there. Collaborative worker update, at this time, we have two physicians left to hire.
Oh, we are now, we're down to one.
All invited, right? One, okay. So at that, at the time we had, there were two that were needed to hire, yes, that's true, but there's now, we just need one left to hire, and I believe that position is half-time for a student, half-time for a school, so help that transition. Also, kind of a celebration is that we have posted Dr. Burkhart's position, and we're hoping to hire that position as a line leader in our decisions. We'll take a look at how we set this decision in that way. I just, I want to just highlight a couple of things, so Jack Frinman reported on activities, and he kind of reviewed the past year. So he writes, nine to twelve, we had 43 males participating in athletics, three thirty-eight female females, we had 211 males and 332 females working music, speech, and a one act play. We also have 15 different sports that were represented at state tournaments in Minnesota. So, yeah, so we had a lot of participation in that activity area. I'm going to go in, because a big part of our meeting was talking about the food support recommendations, sure?
Yeah, actually, we just have Sarah do the BPSF update, and then you can launch into that one.
Sure, and I just have a couple things, BPSF is not meet, but there are some things going on that I wanted to make mention of. There has been a hire, which is fantastic, as a marketing and administrative coordinator for that group, which will be a huge help, and it's got degrees, the vice, they have degrees. And she's been an educator in the district, she has children in the district, she's a baker, she dates to twelve in her group. Also, the Warrior Warren sale is on now, down at Visiter's Brainerd, so thank you to everybody that donated items, warrior wear items for that sale, all of that money that's raised will go to the food and essentials camps at the schools. And then also, and I probably ended up touching on you for some after hours, so I will let you come back to it, it's still one of the very ones.
All right, Michelle, back to you for the equity task.
Okay, so as a part of our student support services, you're in part of our team, and talked with WAC committee about the recommendations for equity task force. So there's just a lot of recommendations, talking about how that will be shared with the core board, and decided we need to do that at the, at A retreat, after our meeting for.
Not for the August.
Not for the August one? Okay, but. Or maybe a board work stuff, so that we can assess what the board, what our recommendations are. So they have, they, throughout the year, they did a real deep dive into social, national community engagement supports within the district, and came up with what our current supports are and what our needs are. And then the new, there's, the new work for the next year will be focusing on community engagement as it relates to how we can best support our certain students, so getting that community engagement in terms of diversity, diversity.
Yeah, we had phenomenal student voices at the tables last year, so heavy student engagement. Some of those rising stars have graduated, and so I think that's the one thing that would be very clear, students being very clear as they want to have to voice. So it's great that we have community members being in, adults being in, the kids in the building that want to have the voice back, so it's one of the things we'll be looking for as we move into the fall, is again, asking those students that come forward, they were very, I would say, the times grew on us, but that allows students to support games more. And so hopefully, as we move into the fall, September, I'll be going to the task force to get those students.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, we call Marcy for the business services report. Director.
I have a question regarding the equity task force. All of our meetings are open to the public. Policy meetings as.
Meetings.
Committee meetings.
Correct.
Director Boyle's mentioned that maybe a lot of you didn't know that. I just have a question, why isn't the task force, why is that not open to people when you have meetings?
At this point in time, so I, I've been on that task force for almost two years, and the priority is what Heidi just talked about, where we're trying to engage student voices, and student voices that have in those sessions revealed some very detailed information about themselves, about their journey through the schools, and about the issues that they're facing, and so we have a community represented through community members that are on that task force, in fact, it's one of the few that's made up of as many community members as non-community members, as school staff and whatever. So that's the balance that we've struck at this point, we feel, of having multiple board members, multiple community members, still allows us to put that layer of safety in place for the students.
I think we do open, open application for community members.
I have another question we earned at that task force, that we reached out to many African-American people in our community, because there are not that on that task force.
There are.
Black people?
There are indigenous, First Nations people on there, or American.
I did have a little bit of.
And to the extent possible, we try to diversify and create diversity as much as humanly possible on that.
Okay.
I mean, sometimes we have, you know, moderate tenants, it's just, it's Catholics. Any other questions before we launch, Marcy, to the business?
So if you call last month, I'm sure there will not be a financial report because you'll not see that in the way I got the audit out in June. So last month, we talked about the students who will be out and who will be in, and Kevin mentioned, well, it'd be nice to know, Director Boyle, sorry, that we have to know the actual student health. So this first report, I know my marks coordinator, I thought it would get a lot more, but she looked it off really quick. So the first part, excuse me, is the balance and the percentages, and then she breaks it out to our section in open enrollment health, and then some districts that the kids are going to, it means this is student health, not A and M's. And then the second section is open enrollment in, in that district, and then the last part is the charter schools. So just information for you guys to, if you have any questions, please, I will refer it to them for our board coordinator, she prepared all this. And then the second report is, when we presented the audit way back in December, there was a chart in there that was just for the last five years for the A and M's, and the lead director was with the, you know, it'd be nice if we could further back where we could see trend there, so I did pull that information back to 2000 was the first I could get, and it just shows you, compared to elementary, secondary, broken open, and our whole enrollment, you can see it's going out, and a little, there was a last one present, since that now. And then next month, we will have the enrollment, we will have starting school, so. Any question?
Just a point of clarification, again, for everybody to, so you have A and M's and you have noses, right? So the reason I ask for noses is because I think it's easier for us to understand what the flows look like, the reality is, the funding doesn't necessarily fall on that based on the grade levels of these kids that are coming in now, because they're funded at different levels, top open numbers would be useful for us to have. So that was the reason that I asked for that. Now, I did want to replace one with the other, the other one's still really important because the funding formula follows it.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
I don't know if this is what you want us to hear for a second. But are, is the executive council or cabinet still meeting on Mondays to look at class sizes, and so we're up to date on enrollments and things as such, or whatever?
Every Monday, we look at projected enrollment, so we made decisions early on based on, so as we get to the tail end of August now, the families who have left us, so we have about 100 families who physically moved out of our district every, the summertime through the year, so typically, we don't see them exit until about the meet before school starts, because that's when they're actually going for their next school trajectory at all. So we do anticipate, or we've seen some spikes, we'll probably start to see a little bit of decline as soon as that shakes up. And then we look every Monday, and that perfect open recording, you guys will see very clearly, say, business, very, you know, we don't have it where the kids are, that haven't shown up our mark yet, so October is more of a future that I like, yeah. October one is going to be the best. Yeah. But no, we're watching it very closely, and we did respond to new secondary sections, and I believe the secondary is our COVID vault, that's where we have about 65 kindergartners way here, because of COVID, it's parents on the map, and so that's a larger group, we have a larger secondary class right now that's coming through, so we've adjusted that a couple buildings, and then we've adapted this support, really focusing on K two class size and on title.
Well, thank you for that, because to go along with Director Hyden's point about teaching assistance, and I mentioned that I had talked to a 20-year veteran teacher here that is an elementary teacher, and K three, and I mentioned about the building blocks of K three educational importance at K three, so I'm glad to hear that we are looking at, prior to school starting, to do the best job with K three, because I want to see this almost verbatim, quote to quote, but not exactly in that person's own words, had been in the district for 10 years, the first 10 years were wonderful, just, you know, as somebody else indicated, the district was, you know, on top of everything, the last 10 years have been a battle for K three, been a battle for K three, and we know that that is significantly important, so anything that, in my opinion, in this board member's opinion, this director's opinion, anything that we can do to help with those class sizes K three is critical, and I see hats not enough here, and I believe that everybody, not only in education, but in the community, and where children in school understand and get that as well, so thank you, thank you for. So thank you. Thank you for watching that closely because it's critical. And we're going to have to make some tough decisions regarding that to, to make sure that those K-3, COVID had a factor. But we also, it's time to move and make sure that we get our educational system back. And we are back to solid grounds, especially with K-3, in my, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thanks, John. I mean, I would tack on, but I have to say that, too, I think there's maybe, I don't know that there are rampant misconceptions on, out there on how we got to where we got to with that landscape. But it's important to note that it really wasn't action by previous school boards before us that really led us to that path of reductions in federal funding, primarily, right?
It's a federal. If you go back to 2008, that's when if you look back at the various class sizes, it might look wider because I'm getting very, very, very well.
Yes.
So.
Lots of factors.
This isn't a recent, within a ride thereby chance.
No. Point it dovetails with the enrollment issue as well. The enrollment issue's been going on since 2012. It is not a COVID thing. Certainly, that certainly poured a little kerosene on fire, but it, for a riot, for reasons. So it's, it's just a multitude of factors that are all converging at one point in time, and this lucky six people up here get to deal with some of that here pretty quick. Thank you, Marcy. Um, next up is the superintendent's report.
I'm going to start with one. So Director Spreer mentioned that we are actually doing a chamber event, so the after-hours is going to be hosted by the Brainerd High School Foundation and Brainerd High School. On August 22nd, at Brainerd High School, the fun part will be, we're going to have speakers, there's door prizes, I've seen a couple of them, they're pretty fun. But then also some tours, so again, opening the doors so people can get in and see what's happening. Also, I know I saw that John Erickson, who's patiently sitting, so he has been gracious. We have, really focusing on our homecoming that's coming up in September, but our super, super exciting event that we want to get out now is we're having a coming home, how can I keep from singing concert in honor of Kirk Hansen. So it's a Kirk Hansen Memorial Homecoming Concert Coming Home. The fun part is, is people started to sign up from all over, so all of you in the room, if you want to get active and participate, you can sing with choir during that concert. We have a rehearsal on the 28th of September, and then another one will be that day for the concert, so I think that's really exciting. A lot of our alumni coming back to be a part of that. For us, going to try to work on parades, so if you are looking to volunteer, looking at, for us, we can have some ideas about storing the stadium and bringing that back to celebrate our 50 years.
Superintendent Han?
Yes, sir.
I want to make it clear that you don't have to be able to sing. I've signed up.
So you want to be, you're.
I've already signed up.
I've decided for some.
Anybody that has a voice or can be heard, or sign even, sign up.
Absolutely, and I've been able to have the, the privilege of having some of the pre-reading from Mr. Erickson and also from Brian Stubbs, our local choral director, and I think his piece very much addresses that piece above all. So I think it's a wonderful chance for us to come together and get connected. Other pieces, I had the privilege of attending the MSBA training a week ago with Director Boyle and Director Ward. We had some real intense, I wouldn't say intense, but little reviews of science literacy. And then really had that opportunity to get involved with Policy 606. We got a lot of legal training from lawyers, so that's always a good time. But I think we learned a lot and really gave us some direction of where we're going to go. And the last piece, as I want to thank, it's been, a lot of times, you sit at board meetings and they're quiet. I appreciated the engagement and the involvement. And then I appreciate that there's pushback on us as administrations and as board members, and as a superintendent, I have a pushback on you. What's very exciting for us is we have lots of bodies coming back into our buildings very quickly. And I think if you really want to get involved and if you really want to make a difference for our child and our district, come volunteer. Come sit with our students, come be a part of their world. You look at times when we look at improving reading scores, boy, when we do targeted services after school, there's nothing better than adults sitting next to a child and going through some of that reading. They get way more excited about you, some superstar walking in at the end of the day compared to some of us who've been with them all day long. We have myriad of opportunities, career technical ed, early childhood, special ed, lunchroom supervision, lunch buddies. You name it, we got it. If you think of us time, we'll find a place for you to be with our kids. I think what I've appreciated is people who come in, the response I typically get is, I had no idea. I had no idea that was happening. I had no idea. I think Director Heidman, you're a great example, you talk about Forest View. You walk me through the doors of Forest View and get to see that day-to-day action. Our kids, the adults, make the differences. So I appreciate the acknowledgement of the people who remember that, you know, staff are working hard. It takes them to do the effort. And so one of the biggest differences when we're looking, you don't have to be that, don't get me wrong, wouldn't it be nice, look at your educational assistance? Wouldn't it be nice to have some more volunteers to be supporting and walking right alongside a human day busing? I know Dottie keeps leaving, but Dottie's been a 21-year bus driver, so people who are bus drivers, she can give you that firsthand experience after 21 years coming on the wheel. But that's my invitation, my pushback to you, involve. Come be a part of us and see what's happening, and I think some of those meaningful feedback, feedback, and Director Ward, you're looking at who can talk about class sport, and if people volunteering class. So I look forward to that. So if you feel like nobody's responding, look at all of our administrators who sit here, ask them why they're involved. Because we'd love to have adults in these relationships to be prepared for that start here. Thank you. That's good.
Very good. Any other questions, Captain?
No questions. Can I make comment, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
Thank you, Director Ward. I would just want to give a shout out to all the people that volunteered at the company fair for the ISB 181 booth. Because I was there, and it was always, there was always people there, and they had the spinning, they had the plinkle, plinkle doll or whatever that thing is called. And it was, people were, people were engaged. And so thank all the people that helped facilitate that and volunteered there as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that. And then, as we almost full of starting, and Superintendent Han talked about that, and open houses are coming up.
Correct.
So, open houses?
Open houses will start on Tuesday.
Come on and find out.
Yep. Never go home, the doors, the people never sleep.
Well, by the time we meet again as a whole board, there are a lot of excitement that's turned, and we don't meet again until after school starts. So that's pretty exciting, too. Great, thanks, Captain. Uh, we'll just go through the future meetings real quick. August 21st, we have a new teacher breakfast orientation, 8 o'clock AM right here in the cafeteria hallway. August 25th, we will be doing our second school board retreat. This is open to the public. We have one community member at our last one. Two others.
Sorry about the question.
And that's going to be in the large conference room over at Brainerd High School, which is right inside the front doors as you come in. Got an exciting array of topics to discuss, so those are kind of interesting. And then we have the August 29th, Forest View Middle School Open House at 4:30 PM. August 30th will be the open houses for all of the elementaries for Brainerd High School and for LEC at 4:30 PM. August 31st is the all-staff kickoff meeting at 10 o'clock AM at the Get to Zootie Center. And then September 4th is Labor Day District Office Closed, or in observance of Labor Day, I should say. First day of school is September 5th. You will see all these smiling faces up here at various buildings welcoming the kids back. And finally, our next regular meeting of this body will be on September 11th, the holiday.
Mr. Chair.
Director Ward.
On September 6th, is on the schedule there for a finance committee meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
And I believe we changed that to September 11th at 4:00 PM, did we not, or? Wasn't there a conflict there? And we changed it to September 11th at 4:00 PM at St.
We're getting that changed.
Okay, okay, correct.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so the finance committee meeting, Mr. Chair, is September 11th at 4:00 PM? I'm not sure. Is it that here, is it here?
I think it'll be here just because it's going to butt up to the board meeting.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
That was the discussion.
Very good. And as a reminder to public, the all, all board committee meetings are open to the public. Okay, that said, we are going to take a brief recess before we move into closed session.
Here's Reed's lawn.
We need a motion to go out to recess.
So.
Motion to recess, Director Ward. Second, Director Spreer, all in favor of a recess.